If these proclamations kicked off, that way I think we have four presentations to make tonight. So we want to do that and give us a little bit of time. I know we'll have some citizens coming in during the middle of all this. And we'll also have some citizens to be to be heard tonight. So we want to make sure that we process that paperwork and all of that and get it ready to go. So first up, I'd like to bring Leslie on up from our city secretary's office. I guess the technical term is like municipal clerks week, but we don't call it municipal clerk. We call it our city secretary's office. I will say and we'll read the proclamation a little bit, but what their office handles is an incredible volume of paperwork. Not just the stuff that gets counsel ready from an agenda standpoint, but if you make a information request, those types of things. All of that flows through their office. They are the repository for all of our record keeping. Even though there's certain departments have like police department and others have certain sensitive information that's kept. City secretary's office certainly works in connection with them when we get a information request. So obviously one of the front lines dealing with the public each and every day. So we want to recognize them and the work that they do for us right here in Pearland. So whereas the office of city secretary, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world and is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the city secretary's office provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, in addition to serving as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the functions of the city secretary necessitate a thorough knowledge of law procedure, administration and interpret interpersonal relations. Whereas the city secretaries have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas city secretaries continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the city secretary through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and provincial, it's a hard word to say, provincial, county and international professional organizations. And now therefore I Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1 through 7th, which is next week, 2022, as city secretary's week. And would like you to join us in not only celebrating that, but recognizing them really for the professionalism that they that they distribute or demonstrate each and every day. I will say this, just a brief aside on that, we had a petition drive this last year, about this time last year, I guess it was getting started. And so, you know, it's the city secretary's office that has to handle all of that. They have to maintain it. They had to go through and verify signatures, all of that, in addition to just their normal everyday work. So this is all part of what they do. They do it very, very well. They handle all of the minutes for our meetings. Unfortunately, they have to sit through our meetings and listen to all this. But Leslie, thank you for the work that you guys do. It doesn't go unnoticed. We see it every, every meeting and it's a pleasure to call you madam secretary. When I call on you to take the vote and like to see if you have a word or two to say.
I was hoping you wouldn't ask me to speak. I do appreciate the Pearland residents here. It's a pleasure to serve you. I look forward to my public service every day. I enjoy the work that I do in providing the service to the community and the city itself.
That way you can protect that. Next up, our public servants week, someone from our, do we have David Gien here from Public Works? There, there's David. There we go. Probably help if I can read Daniel. All right. How are you doing tonight? Good to see you guys. Yeah. And just a a little bit about Daniel. Daniel's one of our longest tenured employees right now. I'm not sure if it's the longest, but I know one of them in public works as well as our city, been here since 1988. So you have seen a change or three since your start date. I think you work with our lift stations. Is that correct? All right. Well, good. And again, I'll say this, we have guys in uniform here tonight. And we often say our first responders and those guys in uniform, police, fire and everything else. Our guys in public works are part of our first responders as well. We do not want to leave them out when we talk about first responders. When we have a storm event, when we have the freeze that we had a little over a year ago, those types of things, these guys were up at it all day, all night, days in, days out. Many, many times it, when a storm comes through, especially a hurricane, it's the guys in our public works that are, in fact, a lot of times the storm isn't really passed. They're out in the elements, getting our roads clear, assessing damage and those types of things. And so these guys do an incredible amount of work. They're out in the elements each and every day. So they put in a lot, a lot, a lot of hard work and potentially dangerous work. It's just a little bit different as far as danger is concerned from fighting a fire or dealing with people in a law enforcement situation. But nonetheless, first responder, just as important as all of our other first responders that are out there. So when we mention that, you guys are included in that. So I'd like to read this to you. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Their tireless efforts are especially critical day today during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol, embassy employees, healthcare professionals and others risk their lives each and every day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants, including teachers, doctors and scientists, train conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide these diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I Kevin Cole, by the power vested vested in me by the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1 through 7th, 2022, as public service recognition week. And again, do something special for a public servant that week. Go out of your way, buy coffee, buy donut, buy hamburger. Go by and just make sure that you touch the lives of these public servants throughout our community. Not only at the city, but the school district and others for the work that they do. Incredible, incredible work. And Daniel, we want to thank you for the work that you've been doing all these years for the city of Pearland. All right. You want to say a few words? Sure.
I want to thank each and every one of y'all for the opportunity for helping me out or being with me, working together with me with the city of Pearland. Time flew pretty quick, you know, it's been nice. I've learned a lot of things, done a lot of things with Pearland, not only just lift stations, but wastewater and water. But it's been a pleasure working for Pearland and it's been a pleasure to accept this award.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you for that. Next up, our crime victims rights week. Talking about unsung heroes. We have Jessica and Roslyn here. And in honor of tonight and crime victims awareness week, I am wearing my blue lapel pin for child abuse awareness month. And obviously children become crime victims sometimes, and it's so horrendous what you guys have to see and put up with and just witness, right? But you're there for these not only children, but adults that are victims of crime. And can't thank you enough for being there for them, what you do as a liaison and all of those kinds of things for our crime victims. I will say this, this is a position that I wish, I wish, and I wish we could work ourselves out of if we didn't have any crime victims. But unfortunately, we still have evil evil in this world. And as long as there is, there's going to be victims. And thank you for your steadfastness to be that buffer, that that resource for all of our victims of crime that that you come in contact with. Okay. Whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it. And whereas crime victims rights act passed here in Texas and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningful participate, meaningfully participate in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights. And whereas victim service providers and allied professionals can reach more victims through innovative trauma informed programs such as telehealth services and multidisciplinary terms, excuse me, teams. Increased access to victim services and compensation in areas that have been historically underserved, marginalized and adversely affected by inequality by implementing culturally responsive services. And whereas equity and inclusion are fundamentally fundamental prerequisites to survivor care and survivor led services that provide victims with opportunities to share their experiences are essential blueprints for support. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate and trauma informed services are offered to all victims. Now therefore, I Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me by the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through 30th, this week, 2022, as Crime Victims Rights Week. And sign today. And it's my pleasure to present this to you. It's, it's more than just a piece of paper. It's what you guys do each and every day. And we can't thank you enough for every victim out there. I'll just say it for them. Thank you. Thank you for your work and thank you for the just being there and being a part of their lives. I'm not sure who would like to receive this, but also say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We appreciate it. Without the support of you and the city and our amazing administration at the police department and our community service providers, we couldn't do what we do every day. And even when we have crazy ideas like don't tank fundraisers, people step up and never even hesitated. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And like I said, I hope it's a profession that we work yourself out of a job. But unfortunately, until that time, you're here and we thank you for that. Now here we go. All of my notes. Trying to do this without my reading glasses. It's getting hard. They put these big words in there. So there you go. Thank y'all. All right. All right. Mental health month. I'd like to, you folks to come on up. This is a real pleasure and a treat to have you guys a part of this. Again, another kind of part of our community that I wish we could work our way out of. But unfortunately, mental health exists. It's been here a long time. I think it's being recognized more and more and more each and every year as real healthcare related, which is a good thing actually. And help break that stigma and all those kinds of things associated with it. And I'm hoping things of this nature can help with that along the way. So with that, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and wellbeing, all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives. Whereas each business, school, governmental agency, healthcare provider, organization and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health, mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Now therefore, I Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim the whole month of May 2022 as mental health awareness month. And call on everyone to not only think about it and talk about it, but just recognize mental health efforts. We've got wonderful mental health professionals here. Thank you for being here. I'd like Dawn, if you would, to speak a little bit about what the month and awareness and all that will mean.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. They're not here, but sometimes they are. So this is really an honor to be here. We have been doing this for several years now and just I'm in agreement with you 100% that it seems like unfortunately, the needs are getting higher every day, but people are talking about it more openly. And I think that's the key to making change. And so we are glad to be here. I'm going to let Shannon share just a quick minute. And I do want to, this is our team from Counseling Connections, but Sergeant Vandergrift, who is representing NAMI Gulf Coast is with us as well because it's a collaborative effort.
Thank you. My name's Shannon Murray and I just want to thank council and the mayor and the city of Pearland for recognizing this really important month. Just to give you a little perspective, Mental Health America stated that in 2021, Texas ranked 51st, including Washington DC for access to mental health. And that's really bad. That's like the worst. But also we rank, Texas ranks fourth in the prevalence for mental illness. So those two statistics right there tell you what kind of trouble we're in. Everyone in this room and everyone you know can make a difference this month. Talk about it. If you see somebody that you think needs help, reach out, you could be saving their life. You're never going to give somebody the idea of hurting themselves, but you may save their life. So be active, be aware, the brain's the most complicated part of your body and there's no reason to be ashamed if something's wrong. So we really, really thank you for bringing this to everyone's attention and thanks for all of your support.
Are there any special activities in May planned? Do we, do we have anything? Make sure that my calendar gets it. They are. Yeah. Okay. Well, good. Well, let's, let's take a picture with this. All right. Perfect.
Good timing.
I saw Bill Eisen's here, he's on the foundation board. Vance was hired by Bill, so he gets the credit for that. And Vance was hired by Bill, yes. No, anyway, so, you know, we, it's just a great achievement. I was visiting with one of our firefighters this afternoon. I'd been, he'd been with the city of Pearland 20 years ago. Left and came back, and now he's in the fire marshals. And he just talked about all the changes have taken place, how this community and this city organization have matured, raised professionalism. And I want everybody to know that this isn't the end. We not only have to maintain this, it's not like a lifetime achievement award, you have to earn it every time. And then also, we're going to have to keep up with the growth and the changes in the city that are going to take place. And so it's going to take continuous work, and we're ready for that. So with that, I'll turn it to Chief Riley and others.
Is this on? Thank you, Mr. Pearson. As you mentioned, this is a team effort. And so I would like some folks to come join me. Robert Upton with Engineering and Public Works. That's a 40 points out of 100 comes from Engineering Public Works, our water system, which is very strong and has the right volumes and pressures. And I'd like Chief Spires to join us, because you have to be able to dispatch the fire department to get those right resources. And their dispatchers team up with our fire and EMS dispatching contractor and do a fantastic job. They got almost a perfect score, as you'll see in just a moment. And then I'd like Mona Chavaria, who's the Chair of the Pearland Economic Development Corporation, if you'd come up here and join us. They were instrumental in helping us fund a study to where we were able to find out we are eligible for this ISO Class 1 rating, and we couldn't have done it without them. And they'll join us in a few minutes when there's a more formal presentation. Couldn't do it without the staffs of these departments and the fire department. And as Mr. Pearson mentioned, you've got to keep going forward as the city builds on new areas, you've got to add more personnel and stations and to maintain this. And I know the city will do that, as well as the water system and these other components. At this time, we have three folks who've traveled aways to come see us tonight. First, we have Mr. Hugh Gibson, he's the Community Hazard Mitigation Manager from ISO. Also with him is Chris Thomas, who is our local area representative for ISO. And they'll be making a presentation. And also, we have with us Mr. Joel Duke. He's the Public Protection Classification Oversight Office from the State Fire Marshal's Office. So obviously, he came in from Austin. And I'm going to turn the podium over to these gentlemen, so they can make their presentations. And when we're done, we'll come down front for the more formal presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. We are honored to be here, Mayor, Council. This is a remarkable achievement, and really, it's a testament to all the good work that you all do. There's about 45,000 fire protection areas across the country. Each one is rated by ISO about every five years or so. And we also update them whenever there's significant improvements and all like that. And generally speaking, better fire protection is indicative of lower insurance premiums being charged to residents and commercial properties. It measures, in fact, with Mr. Pearson, I'm sorry. Yeah, he kind of summed it up, and the chief stole a little bit of my thunder here. But it's the schedule that we use called the Fire Suppression Rating Schedule, and it's based on 100 points as far as the points within the schedule. But there is actually 105.5 points available, even though you're only graded on 100 points, I should say. But it measures what a community's resources are available to respond to a first alarm structure fire. So major fires, you know, five alarm fire or whatever, we don't take that into account. We take just what is a normal response to a first alarm structure fire. We use a lot of national standards within the schedule itself. National Fire Protection Association have a lot of different measurements in there. The APCO for the communications and American Water Works on the water side. As you mentioned, the Class 1 is the best, it is indicative of superior fire protection. As you can see there, it's kind of like Goff's score, not mine, but the lower the score, the better in this case, and you've achieved a Class 1. It goes from 1 to 10. A 10 just is no fire protection, or the community doesn't have a fire station within five road miles that's responding. The distribution with those 45,000 fire protection areas across the country is broken down here. There are probably, and this is a little dated, probably about 470 Class 1 fire protection districts across the country out of the 45,000. About a little less than 1%, if you do the math. You can see within the middle there, the 4, 5, and 6 shows kind of the bell curve bubble there is indicative of, not only represents the distribution of all the classes, but that is really testament to the actual schedule and the effectiveness of the schedule in measuring fire protection and how it correlates to insurers in being that it is a tool that does effectively measure fire protection. If everybody was a Class 1, or everybody was a Class 10, it really wouldn't be a true measurement. In addition to that, our actuarial folks do measure claims losses. And those charts always show how the lower classifications, the better classifications, and especially Class 1s have, in fact, a lower fire loss rate in their community. In Texas, if you can notice there, you still have that little bell in the middle there, but really, you know, as you can see, it is, Texas, unlike other states, we have many more fours, threes, twos. There are a lot more to the left of the Class 5 area than any other state. In Texas, we have about 85 maybe now Class 1s. And that's still a very small number when you look at, there's almost 3,000 fire protection areas in our state. And, you know, so it's really quite an achievement to be there. Having said that, too, we have, and Joel will tell you, we have the most Class 1s in the country. There's no other state. California's a little close and Florida, but we got them beat hands down. So you are not only part of an elite group amongst your, within the state, but within the country as well, a very elite group with the Class 1s. As we said, first alarm response to a structure fire is measured, all components. We have to look in at what's in a community as far as the building infrastructure, the needed fire flows. As you've already indicated, as you grow, you have to continue to maintain, to keep that up. It's really important to do that. On the emergency communication side, and all aspects of the schedule and each of the disciplines, it's really important to note, it's really important that you have the dedicated circuits coming in and all the equipment and the CAD system and all. But what is, it's performance-based. What's really important is how fast you all are answering those 911 calls and getting the fire department dispatched and on the street. With that, you can see you've, I don't know how we did this, and I'm sorry, but I don't know where that hundredth of a point is, but you aced it there, just a fantastic job. And as you can see, to be a Class 1, you have to do well in all sections of the schedule. On the fire side, those big red trucks are important, all the equipment that's on there, all important, all needs to be maintained. But it's performance-based again. What's really important is where those stations are, who's responding, how many folks are responding, how well those folks are trained and all. It's about the people in all these things and how well they do. In this case, these are the 50 points out of 100, I should have said that, the chief said it though. It's 10% communications, 50 fire, 40 on the water, and then we have some community risk reduction, extra credit points. But as you can tell, all across the board, just excellent scores in the fire department. And remember, these are really high bars to achieve. 41 points and change there out of the 50. I will point out here in the highlights, if you look, training, almost maximize there. That's a real testament to the folks in the fire department, training properly for, you know, structure fires. And then as you break it down, you can see in all areas, you did really well. And as the chief said, and the city manager, it's really important to maintain it. As you can see, the deployment analysis, as you grow, that would lessen. So as you are committed, a great city to keep up with that, you know, I'm sure you will maintain that. The water supply, again, excellent, maximize that score there. This is not just about the water mains and the fire hydrants, but how well the water system is maintained, doing flow testing, checking hydrants and all like that. And just, what a great job. We kind of measure that, those points, and then at the end of the part, we can add in community risk reduction. How you're stopping the fire, you know, the best fire to put out is the one that never started, right? And again, this is performance-based. You look at what the code is, who's enforcing the fire code, the inspectors, and what type of public education is being delivered to the public, that you're covering all target has, target risk out there, and that there's a fire investigative program that ensures that all fires are investigated for origin and cause. In this case, almost maximize those points there. Also, across the disciplines of everything, we look at the training, as I indicated in the fire, but making sure that folks are trained and certified for the positions and that they have continuing education for those positions. It's a little hard to see here, sorry, but you had almost 93 points, so a solid Class 1 score when you add all those up. How it breaks down is, we add up the emergency communications, the fire and the water score. We get a subtotal. There is a divergence factor that balances out the 40% of fire, I'm sorry, the 40% of water and the 50% of fire, and that's taken off. And then the community risk reduction is added in. As a former chief fire marshal, I always say at the end that the community risk reduction really put you over the top. But really, all aspects do, it's just kind of how the score breaks down. So we also have provided the fire chief, and he can pass this on to his successors, we have a website that we provide now that breaks down your points and gives some benchmarking comparisons with not only your overall score, but all categories. So you can see that, you know, where you compare as far as statewide, nationally, and amongst a peer group of similar-sized cities and fire departments. So it's our honor, Chris Thomas and I, our local representative, to be able to award you with the Class 1, which is effective July 1st. And I'm going to pass this on to Joel, and then we'll present the plaque.
Thank you very much, Skip. Mayor Cole, Council, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Joel Duke. I'm the Public Protection Classification Oversight Officer with the Texas State Fire Marshal's Office, a division of the Texas Department of Insurance. I'd like to congratulate Pearland Fire Chief Vance Riley, Pearland Fire Department, the Water Department, the Emergency Communication, and everyone else involved in achieving an ISO Class 1 rating. A giant congratulations. We understand the commitment it takes and the financial means that it takes to achieve this goal, and we thank you truly for your hard work. The Texas State Fire Marshal's Office mission statement is to reduce the loss of life and property through prevention, education, and protection. We thank you for helping us achieve this goal by providing superior fire protection for the constituents of Pearland. On behalf of the Texas State Fire Marshal, Chief Orlando Hernandez, and the Commissioner of the Texas Department of Insurance, Cassie Brown, I congratulate you on this achievement and present you as well with your Class 1 plaque from the Texas State Fire Marshal's Office. Congratulations.
It clearly is a big night here at City Hall. As you heard, basically, 1% of cities across the nation ever achieve what we're achieving here with the ISO rating. And it truly has been a team effort. As Chief has often said, it's not just the fire department, but you've got Engineering Public Works, our Projects Department, City Management, City Council certainly, by having a vision to see fire protection throughout our community. And that didn't just start, you know, last year. Chief Riley, since he got here, has had the vision to build a world-class department. That's what we have, and these are some of the great things that come as a result of having that. So it is really an honor to be able to receive this tonight, and we hope every single time we have to go through this, that we continue it on and on in the future. So thank you for that. We will, why don't they hang on to that for just a second? There you go. Many people think achieving that just means, you know, building more firehouses and those types of things. But, you know, one component that we forget about is if the roadways aren't clear, if they're congested, they can't get there in a certain amount of time. And if they do get there on time, they don't have any water. It's pretty useless. So it truly is many, many departments throughout the city that contributed to that. So what a great occasion to be able to receive that tonight. All right, moving forward in our agenda, public hearing number one. I'll call on staff to read in the record, the reason for the public hearing, and then move right into your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a public hearing, a request by Shaheen Katami, applicant on behalf of Jose Mahi, owner for approval of a conditional use permit for dwelling, single-family detached use within the old town site mixed-use district to accommodate three detached dwelling units on three separately-platted lots totaling 0.2869 acres of land, generally located at 2529, 2531, and 2533 Park Avenue. As stated, this is a request for approval of conditional use permit to allow the development of three single-family lots. We did have two phone calls that were against, and an additional phone call for information. You can see from the aerial and zoning map that this property is zoned Old Town mixed-use and has the Sullivan development both to the south and to the east. Again, a look at the aerial, and then a zoomed-in feature, so that way you can see the character of the surrounding area. The current site plan that is proposed for development is shown on the screen. This indicates three homes, each of which are front-loaded off of Park Avenue. On the screen now is the proposed landscape plan, and then the front elevation, and then the other elevations of the proposed buildings. So the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearings, or their public hearing for this item on April 4th. There really wasn't a consensus of decision amongst the members. There was one member that stated that they would approve if the plan was designed for alley loading. Another was in favor of tabling the item to allow for a redesign. There were two undecided and two that didn't state if they were either for or against the request. After the discussion from the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff reviewed their notes and has the following in addition. So with the Sullivan Brothers' development, the Pearland Economic Development Corporation, both of which providing infrastructure within the old town site, some of the improvements that could be accessed by these three lots are the on-street parking, stormwater drainage, and the public alley that will be to the rear. So should City Council seek to maintain the look and feel, staff recommends the addition of the following conditions for approval. One, that the applicant shall provide rear-loaded garages with access from the alley. Development of the property shall be coordinated with the adjacent developer to ensure timing of those improvements. And two, the applicant shall design their plan to utilize the regional stormwater drainage system and coordinate construction of their improvements with the adjacent developer. And that completes staff's report.
All right, thank you, Martin. Is the applicant present? Do you have a presentation, sir?
I would be able to present.
Oh, okay.
No one told me that. But as he was presenting.
If you could do one thing for me, real quick, just give me your name and address for the record there in the mic, and then you can add to what the...
My name is Shaheen Katami with Silver Coal Group. I'm a builder and general contractor. I live in Houston, 810 Walnut Bend, 77042. We have all the plans, including architectural, structural, civil, everything prepared and stamped by architects and engineers, and they have been submitted to the city for plan review and approval and construction permit. And about a week or so after plans was submitted to the city, we were informed that we need to obtain a CUP, which we were not aware of. And we are complying with all the rules and regulations and city requirements for new Therefore, I am here tonight to request for approval of CPU to go forward with these three new single-family homes. And I'll be glad to answer any questions and concerns that you might have.
Okay, thank you for that. And we may have questions when we get to the City Council portion of it. Thank you for being here. All right. Moving forward in our public hearing, opportunity for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, go to the podium, name and address for the record, three minutes for your comments. Thank you, sir.
Paul Eskine, 2519 Park Avenue in Pearland. My business is next door to the property that's under the CUP. I spoke to the Plan and Zoning when they had their meeting and voiced our opposition to the proposed CUP as it stood. Myself and Sims Automotive, which is here tonight, both of us feel this way. Basically, we feel that it's going to make the area more of a hodgepodge, that's the term that I used, where we have businesses of general business, we have homes residential on the other side of the street down to Walnut, and then past us would be this development of three lots. They're very, they don't give a lot of space on the width of the lots, but then the Sullivan Brothers have their development that comes in from that part all the way to Walnut and then behind us. And when the Sullivan Brothers brought in theirs, they were bringing in a certain look and feel, more of a higher-quality type that we felt for the old town site. And that kind of brought everybody's level, you know, up. And so here we have, you know, an area that we would prefer that it be a general business or a commercial building like we already have there, or a house like it is across the street, or something like the Sullivan Brothers. And so I was speaking to Mrs. Sims and others that we're not trying to, you know, people have the right to develop. We do not want to stand in the way of development. It's not always going to be just an empty lot, and that area's going to change quite a bit with the Sullivan Brothers' development, you know, coming in. And so what we were looking at is not to have just this and that, and this and that, and have more of a hodgepodge type of thing, where it's more that it's a planned, you know, item that we have. And if they wanted to have the look and the feel and the quality of Southern Brothers, then we want it to stand in the way, we want it to be against it. But we also want it to be against the general business or a home like it is across the street. So we wanted to, at the moment of how it is, it has the parking in the front, which is like it is across the street. But then Sullivan Brothers, all their parking's going to be in the back. So it is going to be a different look and kind of a mix. And so at this time of how the CUP stands, being proposed, we would ask you all to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eskine. We'll make the appeal one more time, or two more times, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Then third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one move in that direction, we'll move to City Council for questions, comments, and concerns. Ms. Mereff?
Thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree with staff in their recommendations that I don't disagree with the use, but I think the conditions we should put upon the use is that it should match the look and feel of the Sullivan Brothers' development. We put them through quite a ringer to be able to do that. They're adding a lot of infrastructure improvement to the area, they're putting in investment. I think it's only fair to them that we ask any other similar developments to do the same, so there's continuity. I think it's disappointing for the owner that they got into plan review before anybody identified that there's a conditional use permit required. That's one of the first things that we should be doing as consultants, is to make sure that your zoning is allowed by right, and if not, then ensure that you have the necessary approvals prior to getting that far invested in the project. But we are, we are, I think the use is, again, okay for the area, but we want some consistency, or I would say, I would want some consistency with the neighboring development that's proposed.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Cam Cor.
I just want to hear from the staff. What were the two items that were the required or the recommendations?
Basically, the two items in summary are to redesign the buildings to be rear-loaded to utilize the alley, and also to utilize the regional storm detention that is being Basically, the two items in summary are to redesign the buildings to be rear-loaded to utilize the alley and also to utilize the regional storm detention that is being proposed for construction with the Sullivan Project.
Have the applicant given any indicator, would they comply with those two items if proposed?
The applicant previously discussed their intent to utilize the regional storm. They were reluctant to redesign for the rear-loaded, or they stated during the Planning and Zoning Commission that they were reluctant to redesign for the rear-load.
Folks who don't know, the Sullivan Brothers is a group that they've got a lot of the lots over here. As somebody who's in the home building, just for the record, I have no relationship with Sullivan Brothers whatsoever, don't contract or work with them, but they're bringing a higher threshold, I guess I would put. And I think we talked about this six months ago, and I said that there would be a lot of people who would not meet that threshold, and there would be a lot of unhappiness at the P and Z and at the city council level. And I think you're starting to see this. We never ever, I've never seen so far, we're undecided and we don't have a vote total on P and Z. I've never seen that. We've sat here for a year and a half, and they essentially declined to offer an opinion. And so that is not common by any stretch. And I think that is a reaction to, this isn't Sullivan Brothers and it's not at that threshold of quality. I mean, that was, that's the filet mignon, and we don't want hamburger helper unfortunately now, and we're having to adjust our taste. I'm pro-housing. I work in housing and development. I want people to have the American dream, but I also am recognizing that the city and the people at the P and Z is moving in a different direction. It is at a higher threshold. So I have a lot of uncertainty to this. I defer to the staff. They've worked extremely hard. I think these recommendations are relatively benign to me. They have a cost to the applicant. A rear-load, can you just clarify what a rear-load is versus a front-load for those who aren't in the space?
Sure thing. So a front-loaded garage is a garage that is accessed from the public street. A rear-load means that it is, the garage is accessed from the alley.
Then the garage doesn't face the street. And so you have to go get to your house. You're going to use your vehicle. You have to go through the alley and don't go on the public right-of-way. Correct. All right. Mayor, I just, I think this is a very interesting scenario. I think this is complex. Until Sullivan Brothers shows up, I think a lot of people are going to have a hard time getting there. I respect that the neighbors have shown up and voiced their position, and I'm predisposed to them wanting their neighborhood to look nice.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I just would agree with comments there said. The neighboring businesses in the area, I think the Sullivan Brothers was a tough sell for them just putting residential there at that density. And then to kind of downgrade it, but to come in with a lesser product now doesn't feel right. I'll prove this with the staff recommended changes in hopes to getting that rear-loaded product.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment from Member Carbone almost exactly. And yeah, I think that we need to have the same standard in place. So, thank you.
Mayor, if I could request, staff, would you have some language that we could offer an amendment to the approval of the CUP that would help us to match specifically that this development needs to match with Sullivan Brothers? Would we just say that we would approve with the staff's recommendations being added to a conditional use permit? Or would there be other language that is a little bit more precise?
Martin, before you offer that, I do have a quick question on the lot size here. If I'm reading the packet correctly, they're proposing a 33 and 1/3 width lot, is that correct?
I believe that matches what my recollection.
Were they already, because the old lots were 25-foot by?
Correct. This was originally four lots. There was a proposal the past that turned this into three lots. Then that proposal went away. There was a duplex opportunity that came forward. That duplex was denied. There's been several iterations to.
So my question is, I thought the Old Town Site rules outside of a PD which Sullivan received had to have a minimum 50-foot lot width.
The minimum 50-foot lot width was reduced by Planning and Zoning Commission action.
Okay. On this or?
For these three lots, because the, that previous, the previous proposal went forward with the amended lot size first before they came forward for their use.
Was that change in lot size have been approved by this council? Or was it?
The change in lot size was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission variance approval, which is under their purview.
Okay. It was, that was just a source of confusion for me because I thought that. So thanks for the clarification, because I was sitting here thinking, why did they, why'd they get this approved if it wasn't a 50-foot lot? Typically, those four would turn into two and, which made sense in one of those scenarios with the duplexing and those types of things. So. So I, obviously, I think there's an appetite maybe to approve something with what the council, excuse me, with what the staff has mentioned here. I still wonder if that gives us the same look and feel and the, the look that the other developer has gone at length to try to provide. So I'll leave it for council to decide on that.
Mayor, here's some of the notes that the applicant may not be willing to conform to the Sullivan-type building. So if that's the case, why waste your time with an amendment to it?
Right.
We can ask the applicant if he's willing to change the design.
So what I'm wondering is if we couldn't get through the public hearing, when we get to the new business item number two here, if we shouldn't just postpone it, let him look through that for a couple of weeks, then come back to us on whether or not he can, he can abide by. Because I agree with you, if he can't, and it just.
My only caveat is we, I've proposed that that's what I would want. I think there's another one other council member that stated that that's what the direction they would be going. I would, I would hate to send him.
Two others. I heard, I heard Member Orlando.
I'd like, for the fairness of the applicant, I would want us to feel comfortable, we're giving them definitive four votes to a, to that amendment. Otherwise, it wouldn't be approved. If there's not enough of us that say we would want it to be a Sullivan Brothers Development and would take it as is, then why put him through the exercise? If there's four of us that would say Sullivan Brothers are nothing, then he really has nothing, and he would have to go and reevaluate. And at that point, I think it's worth the postponement. That would be my only, just to be fair to him, not put him through an expensive exercise that may not bear any fruit.
Yeah, I got you. Did you have a comment? All right. So I haven't heard an amendment.
We don't have the item.
Yeah, you're right. Any other questions, comments from council on the public hearing side of things?
If I, we could, Mayor, I could, we could put the item up for vote. I'll offer the amendment. If we get four votes to the amendment, then we can discuss postponing the final approval to give the applicant an opportunity to, to evaluate and see if he wants to move forward.
And real quick, staff, does a CUP run with the property or the applicant?
Runs with the property, but there is a one-year time limit, which council can't extend for another year if they wish to.
Okay. I want that on the table as well. Do you have something else? Or do you have a comment? Or we can just ask the question, are you, are you willing to do the rear-loaded product that's, that council, or excuse me, that staff is proposing here? It sounds like council may be amenable to allowing that.
I would like to make a comment on that. Couple of items, as a matter of fact. It was mentioned a few times that our project will be a downgrade from Sullivan Brothers or from general looks of the neighborhood. And I don't know where all that information is coming from. As a matter of fact, our construction will be on the, on the upper side of what the existing houses are in the neighborhood. I briefly glanced at Sullivan Brothers' proposal that is on the, on their website. None of their houses have any kind of bricks or any kind of stock on it. Maybe they are not required by that. Our construction has all brick in the front. We were required to do that by the, by the City of Pearland Plan Review. And also, our houses are about 2,500 square feet. Whereas Sullivan Brothers, they are building two types of houses, a one-story, about 1,600 square feet, and a two-story of about 2,000 square feet. So the idea of our house is going to be downgrade, I have no idea where that is coming from. Now, number two, regarding the back-loading garages, there is no alley on the back of the houses, nothing. It's just grass and dirt. Nothing is built there. If we were to change the design and make them in a back-loading in the garages, how are our clients going to get to the garages when there's no alley there? We don't know when Sullivan Brothers is going to start construction. We don't know who is going to build that alley, who's going to pay for it. We are ready to start the construction, and we will finish these three houses in about six months. So by the end of this year, houses will be finished, but the alley is not there. So how are we going to sell these houses? How are they going to access the garages?
Well, and I think, and I'll, I'll answer that. So if you go back to the staff recommendations, Martin, you'll see the applicant shall design their plan to utilize the regional storm and coordinate construction of their improvements with the adjacent developer. So it would, it would be an adjacent and working side-by-side with the other developer on those improvements, because that's part of what they are tasked with. And then since, I guess Sullivan Brothers has been, has been brought up and also brought up by the applicant, Martin, do we have any kind of rendering of what Sullivan Brothers is looking to do here?
Sure, give me just a moment. Mayor, while he's doing that, if you don't mind, it was alluded to, but it's not only the private investment, the city has significant public monies through PDC into the infrastructure of the project. And so it was mentioned in the memo too, that if the, this applicant's original, there'd be costs to go back and redesign and try to fit that in. So that's also a factor you may want to consider.
Right. All the more reason, Member Cam Car, we had that discussion when they came through. We knew this day would come.
It was very robust.
Yeah, and I think maybe to the fairness of the applicant, I wouldn't say, let's dial back the word downgrade, let's just say consistency. If you ever credit that you want to build a quality product here and you take great pride in your work and that you're going to be very happy to present these homes to the future buyers and be, and that they would be proud to live there. I don't deny any of that. What we would, what I would like to see is if we put an organization through quite a lot to ensure that there is a quality and a consistency as a minimum standard, one of them potentially being rear-loaded. We think it's only fair to them that we put their neighbors through that same wringer. And I certainly understand your perspective that your home may be of a higher quality than Sullivan's. Maybe they may disagree with that, but certainly we could establish a minimum standard for which everybody in the area should abide by, given that we requested this and the city put some investment to allow this to move forward. We just want y'all to kind of be consistent.
So basically, we are talking about the looks of the finished product. It's just that because Sullivan Brothers building in that area, we have to look like them, we have to match their products.
I would say that, that when we put the planning requirements on there, it's just a minimum standard. If you want to increase that, if you want to enhance that, if you want to offer through your conditional, through a negotiation with staff and with us, an alternative that you say, hey, this is a higher quality. So certainly, they're using a hardy board as their fascia, and you want to use a masonry, is that going to be? We can certainly converse with you there about making sure that you have a unique product that fits your vision and your dream, but we have some minimum standards to where both the developments are being held consistently to the same standard.
Well, I don't have any issue with building a high standards. The only issue here is to redesigning the entire project to make it rear-loading garages from the alley. And that changes everything completely. We have to go to, back to the drawing board and start everything from the beginning. So far, plan developments for these three houses cost us about $35,000. So if we scrap that completely, go back to zero, that means another complete charge of architectural, structural, civil, which is really, I don't think honestly it's fair to us, because if Sullivan Brother was not developing in this area, if they were not building on those lots, would we still be here having the same discussion?
I think that's a, that's a fair question, but unfortunately, that's not where we are. We've already made action on Sullivan, so that's established the condition. I think you do have a fair statement about if you have to redesign, is that fair to you as the owner? I won't state, I won't, I won't offer an opinion on that, but I would say that in the critical path of design and approvals, the zoning, the check of the zoning, the conditional use permit or zone changes or anything in that, in that nature, that precedes the design. So to have the design occur prior to getting the conditional use permit, we're kind of out of sequence. The city should not be obligated to allow a different standard because the design was ahead of itself. It is, it's kind of the most charitable way I can state that. If, if there's a way that you can work with your team and say, how can we do this affordably for you? You know, that's certainly a conversation that does not warrant discussion in this chamber, but the conditional use permit really should, that approval should precede the design. And so let's, we're going to try and operate as if that is the case, because that's what's fair to everybody who has to go through this process.
So, Councilmember, I think what I'm hearing between the applicant and here is I haven't heard, yes, he would be willing to make these changes off the, off tonight. And I want to give him the opportunity to look over the next several weeks on, on those types. And also here, three of you, and it takes three tonight, because we only have five council members, I've heard three state that they would really want to follow staff's recommendations at a minimum. So I think we get through the public hearing, then maybe we postpone and allow the applicant to work with staff. And if they can, then we can come back. We've already had the public hearing. We can make that as a new business item on a future council meeting. But if he's not willing to, then we, we've done the public hearing and we move on.
Well, what about the issue of the back alley that is not there?
And again, that's part of the discussion that I think we need to have regarding all that. So. Any other questions, comments from council? We can get into the new business item. All right. Let's close this, this public hearing number one, and we'll move to new business item number two. Councilmember Orlando, would you place that on the table, please?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2022-CUP 22-05, so moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We've had staff reports. I'm open to what we do with this item now.
Mayor, I'll just offer that we postpone this to the, to the next available meeting. Give the applicant an opportunity to work with staff with, I would say, the understanding that we will probably push you to a rear-loaded design that matches significantly or exactly to the Sullivan Brothers and allow you to move forward in the next meeting confidently. I'll move to postpone, Mayor.
We have a motion to postpone.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on postponement, which is not debatable. So Madam Secretary will call for a vote on postponement.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to postpone to the next available meeting.
And Martin, would you guys go ahead and get with the applicant and maybe get something set up early so he can help walk through that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. Moving to consent agenda, we have items A through K, and I haven't seen or. Moving to consent agenda, we have items A through K, and I haven't seen or heard anybody asking one to be removed. F is in Frank, okay? All right, Member Carbone, would you present consent agenda items A through K with the exception of F as in Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Approval of Consent Agenda Items A through K with the exception of F, I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero for consent agenda items A through K with the exception of F.
All right, now, all the way over to new business item number three. Kamkar, would you place that on the table, please?
Consideration Possible Action Resolution R 2022-97, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. And the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a request by the developers of the Massey Oaks Development for an amendment to the approved plan development. Staff's been in discussion with the applicants and gone through their requested changes and have come to agreement and positive recommendation. Engineering staff is available primarily if there's any questions, but they want to comment to you further, but really, it's up for your consideration.
All right. Move to questions, comments from council? Kamkar?
Just a brief item of what the, the items covered that were requested, just so the, for the public record.
Raj or, I don't see.
Aaron, do you have one? Take that? On a legal standpoint?
I think, I think the engineering folks might be able to talk about that, yeah.
Good evening, Council. So this is amendment for mostly because of the conflict with pipelines. And originally, when the design was primarily, it was designed, no conflict with the pipeline was expected for storm sewer, as well as sanders sewer. During the, during the process, it's, it's found that storms were cannot be constructed without lowering the pipeline. So there were multiple and different types of options were analyzed to see like if we can do kind of siphon, but it is, the roadway itself, County Road 100 roadway itself is in county, so we don't have 100% restriction of what to do there. So with the, we discussed with county, we discussed ourselves too, because we didn't want to have siphon in the storm sewer system. Personally, storm siphon works best or good for sanders sewer system where we can predict the flow. For storm sewer system, it doesn't work that way, because there would be 100-year event once in a year or twice in a year, but rest of the all time, the storm collects debris and puts that under the hole. That's kind of siphon is, works under pressure only. And later on, is discovered that the sanders sewer system cannot be constructed because of the same pipeline too. So without offsetting pipeline, without lowering the pipeline, these two things cannot be constructed. And for that reason, to allow for the construction, the developer reached out to the pipeline companies, and they come up with the cause, and they are going to bear the cost to lower the pipe, pipeline. So it will require additional time and actually designed to achieve the goal, so that with the, those conflicts can be avoided. For, for that reason, when the DA was originally put together, there was expectation that the County Road 100 will be constructed by, by when 500th home are accepted by the city. But so far, there, we would not be able to achieve that goal, because the section one and section two of the project, which fronts to County Road 100, has already been constructed. It's almost ready, infrastructure has been in place for that, except for the sanders sewer system. So it comes up, County Road 100 itself, sanders sewer system, and water line. Water line from Bailey Road to County Road 100 has already been constructed. Water line from County Road 100 to Harkey Road is under construction, and sanders sewer line from Harkey, Harkey to, along, along Harkey to Bailey Road is under construction. So the first phase of the section one and section two front in County Road was expected to gravity flow towards the system. But when, during construction, it's found that three feet of the difference between sanitary and pipeline that was originally designed, there was some error or something went wrong. So there's only half a foot difference between the top of sanitary and the top of pipe, which is not, which is not acceptable to the pipeline companies. So pipeline companies, for that reason, this also covers that, that during this phase, the initial phase or temporary phase, there will be a temporary lift station, so that the section one and section two can start functioning with temporary lift station, and that temporary lift station will be owned and maintained by the developer until the pipeline gets lowered, and there will be gravity sewer flow.
Right. Raj, you're giving a tremendous amount of details. Thank you. I, I, one of the items I just wanted to clarify, the financial obligations have not moved from the developer to the city. We're just playing with timing when those obligations need to be.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I just want to be very clear on that. This is a gigantic project, it is going to bring a lot of benefit to the city, but there are obligations that, as part of that development, that the city will be extending service, that the developer also has to perform as well.
Yes, and to all the top of that, this also identifies county as one of the reviewer and approval of the process in the past, like that part was missing. So it adds that layer onto it. So not only city, county reviews and approves too, and it is going to be owned by the county. In the past, like, it was not clear.
Understood. All right. That's, Paul, ahead.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, thank you for that. Moving to new business item number four, Mr. Little, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2022-16, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a agreement between the state and State Department of Transportation and the City of Pearland for FM 518 expansion, and this is for the section westerly between 288 and Cullen. So this is facilitating the city to get involved with through PDC to funds for some of the elements of the project, utility relocates and the like, and this is the refinement of that, and this is, this is the portion that is budgeted by Tech Dot. There is a separate section east of Cullen that's coming up for a public hearing on Thursday night, virtual and in-person by Tech Dot, but that is not relative to this portion, just to be clear.
All right. Thank you for that. And I would like to recognize our state representative, Ed Thompson, is present tonight. Thank you for being out here, Ed. I'm sure we'll see you Thursday night, unless we all want to go hide somewhere. So, but no, we, we thank you for that, and obviously thank Tech Dot for helping us with 518 along the way. So, turn it over to questions, comments from council? Seeing none, new business item number four, questions, comments?
No, sir.
All right. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Mr. Perez, would you present item number five, please?
Shirley, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2022-69, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. I do have one member of the public that signed up to speak on, well, this item and, and the next one, Mr. Dennis Jackson. Thank you for being here tonight. Did you want to speak for both, or just one?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm, I'm speaking in favor of both, but I'll do it in conjunction, if that's okay.
All right, sounds good.
And again, my name is Dennis Jackson. I'm the current chairperson for the Pearland Parks Beautification and Recreation Board here in Pearland. And as I stated, I'm speaking, I'm in favor of this resolution as well as the next one, this current resolution being to allocate money for the building of our all-inclusive park at Shadow Creek Ranch Sports Complex. I just want to say that on my behalf, as well as I'm sure our Parks Board behalf, we're excited to speak in favor of this. If anything, if anything that the pandemic taught us or showed us, it was that our parks and open space and our trails are extremely important. We've had a lot of building going on at Shadow Creek to include the Miracle Field, as well as our new rugby and cricket fields, and for us to neglect our inclusive park and not pass this resolution and give it the facilities that it needs would be very remiss of us. So I, I'm standing here tonight to, to speak in favor of that. I'm also to speak in favor of the naming of that park. I will not reveal the, the name for that, but also just to, I'm sorry, the inclusive playground. To, so I'm speaking in favor of both of those things, and I think it would be remiss of myself if I don't also come up here and speak in favor of our Parks Department and our, and her, and its director, Ms. Carrie Capers, and the wonderful work that she has been doing. I want the council to take in note during this budget season, that while our city is continuing to grow, all of our facilities also need to grow. We also need to make sure that we have the appropriate personnel and equipment to do that, and I just want you guys to make sure that you give the Parks Department that equipment, that personnel. I mean, excuse me for reading, I usually don't like to do that, but I just want to make note the fact that our park, our Parks Department is currently in charge of about 18 miles of trail. They're in charge of 14 parks, 11 softball fields, five baseball fields, six basketball courts, two dog parks, 14 playgrounds, two splash pads, the natatorium, and about 547 acres of parkland. And they have been keeping up with all of this, shorthanded and short-staffed. Currently, this, the Parks Department is about 14,564 hours short on staff. So as you guys consider budget this season, please take into consideration of that, as well as taking into consideration for this resolution passing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We'll now move to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. I used the word auspicious earlier, and I think this qualifies as well. This is a major step forward to our inventory of park and playground opportunities with this inclusive playground. This has been long desired and, and discussed, but tonight, we're here to award a major contract for the actual acquisition of that. This is thanks to and only because of the Parks Foundation and their work to highlight the need, and also do the fundraising that facilitated that. And then also, there's a major, as described in the material, a major state grant that we're very thankful for and working through, and meaning the needs for to fund this, and that was facilitated in large part by Representative Ed Thompson. And so this first item here is for the contract to award that, which is off of the buy board, and there'll be a separate acquisition of the surface, which we'll procure, but tonight, this gets the ball rolling. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions, comments? I thought you were moving towards your mic. Sorry about that, Mr. Little. Any other questions, comments from council? I just want to highlight again, I think this is an awesome night to be here and watching this playground move forward. The folks at the foundation took the ball eight years ago, I guess it was, had to get a little bit better organized, and once you were there, it started to domino pretty quick. So this is a big occasion, and I know these costs keep moving, and tonight, we can finally nail down some cost. We still have the surface to go, but it's a, it's a big, it's a big, big deal. My family is, is very interested in this park, as I have a nephew in a wheelchair with spina bifida, and he, he tells me all the time, the only thing I want to do is be able to play on a park just like my friends, and on a playground, just like that, and them with him. And so this is going to allow, as Mr. Jackson said, totally inclusive. If we're going to be, call ourselves an inclusive community, this park will actually help make that happen in reality, not just saying it, but in reality. So I want to thank the foundation for the efforts that you've done to get to this point. We're not quite there. We'll cut a ribbon one time sometime this year, hopefully, and then we can really celebrate the, the accomplishments here. So with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, thank you for that. We're, we're back to Mr. Orlando, item number six.
Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2022-93.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report was really in the, the last one.
Yep. I think there was a little, a bit, Carrie wanted to mention this, if that's right.
Okay.
So, Ms. Capers?
Good evening, thank you. I would like to just recognize the fact that the Forever Parks Foundation has submitted an application to us for naming of the inclusive playground, and I think they've signed up to speak on this item, so if it's all right with you.
Sounds good. We have Ms. Nikki Kamkar. Good evening, madam.
Cole, thank you, council. I'm Nikki Kamkar, 3409. 3409 Ashton Springs Lane here in Pearland, Texas, and I am here today as a board member of the Forever Parks Foundation. And I may get a little teared up, so bear with me, because it was one year ago, exactly, almost one year ago, that I met Ed and Freddie Thompson at the Davis Days Foundation Crawfish Boil. They, I, I use the word met, they may use a different word, because, well, they were probably there to enjoy crawfish and, and refreshments. I, I, I had a playground to tell them about. So it was, you know, at that crawfish boil that I said, can I, can I convince you to come to a, to the campaign kickoff? We're, we're doing it on May 1st, we're doing it at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch. Can I get you to get there? You'll see the designs, we'll tell you all about it, I know you're going to love it and feel passionately about it. Well, Ed showed up. Couple weeks later, I got a text message that said, Nikki, can you send me that plan? Can you show me those designs? I'm going to go talk to some people at the Capitol. And it was in July of last year that we were awarded a $750,000 grant, which brought us the bulk of the funding for this playground. And as Mayor Cole said, that's when the dominos really started to fall. And since then, as a foundation, we've raised an additional $230,000, with more than $200,000 in grants still pending, and we know we're going to absolutely close the gap to get to surfacing and have this ribbon cutting in the fall. Now, for those of you who don't know, Representative Thompson, as well as I've been able to get the favor of over the last couple of months, he is our 29th district representative, he has been as such since first elected in 2012, and has been re-elected every time since then. He's a 30-year Pearland resident who constantly is finding ways that he can give back and make sure that our area is getting what they need, including Brazoria County's first all-inclusive playground. So this is going to be a destination, not just for Pearland, but for the broader Brazoria County area. We, as a foundation board, thought long and hard about the design of the playground and the naming of the playground, and we, as a board, are asking for council's approval to name the future playground, the Ed Thompson Inclusive Park.
And Nikki, I may take over. Any other questions and comments from council? I don't think you can say much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Parks Board, I, this, this was not something I expected to come to tonight. I'm a little bit lost for words as to what to really say, other than, you know, it's, it's an honor to have, you know, a it's an honor to have, you know, a park like this named for me. When I came to Pearland in 1982 to open my insurance office, I didn't know anyone, other than people I had called on the phone and harassed about where their insurance policies expired. But I opened my office and, and my goal, you know, was to serve this community in a way that I would try and do it in a way that I felt like was an honor to God and to the folks that supported me, and, and I felt like it was important to give back to this community, and this community has given me more than, you know, I could ever, ever repay. You know, I, my wife, I want to thank her for putting up with so much of this and, you know, these adventures that we've been on, and as we've served in many different areas from the school board to city council and Economic Development Board and the chamber and all those sorts of things, it, it takes a tremendous amount of time to do that, but it, but it doesn't come without sacrifices by, you know, the families, so I thank her for that. But I, I, I want to just thank everyone here tonight. It's such a humbling honor to, to even think that something like this would ever happen, and so I just, I just want to thank everyone. There you go.
Yes.
Would you mind making an amendment to the motion officially naming this after Ed?
I would be honored to, and it is with great pleasure that for my former boss, who I've had the pleasure of knowing Ed and Freddie for, for many years and, and seeing everything that they've done for the community, that I have the pleasure of making the amendment to name this the, what, the Ed Thompson?
Ed Thompson, Ed Thompson Inclusive Park.
The Ed Thompson Inclusive Park. So moved.
Second. We have the motion and a second. This is a motion to amend. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Orlando.
Absolutely aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Motion carries to amend, five to zero.
Now we'll be voting on the amended motion, so making it final. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
And Member Perez.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, now. Very appropriate. Ed, thank you so much for what you've just done since you've been in Pearland, but specifically for this playground, going to Bat Forest with Texas Parks and Wildlife and getting that grant, and I know, I, I think we have the grant request and all of those kind of details finally worked out, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Be remiss, Brandy, your right-hand person here in the district, thank you for all you did to make this a reality as well. All right, now let's get it ordered, get the surface ordered, let's get it built, and let's let these kids play on it, hopefully by September-ish, just by the time it's cooling off, we can get out there and play on that playground, and I can't wait to see it. Got a ribbon on it, it's going to be great. So thank you again for all the efforts here tonight. It's a big occasion tonight, only bigger when we cut the ribbon. All right. Moving on, item number seven, Mr. Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration impossible action resolution R 2022-59, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Mayor, council, you heard in the ISO report about the criticality of equipment to get our personnel where they need to be, when they need to be there. Number seven is a, our continuing efforts towards that. We are trying to be effective and efficient. We've got two ambulance refurbs, ones, two remounts, and two remounts of new chassis and two refurbishments of existing, and so this item's been in the works and recommend your consideration for that, and then we have items in the budget amendment for additional consideration, but this would get us rolling. You know, we have, are seeing supply chain problems, and so this is also a piece of that is trying to keep the existing equipment fresh and in use as much as possible. Nothing ahead.
Good deal. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, moving along, new business item number eight. Mr. Kamkar, would you present that, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1605-5.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
This is our mid-year budget adjustment consideration for items that through the course of year found necessary to bring forward, and these are within keeping us in the budget amount, amounts for our targets and throughout our financial policies, and ask Eric Roche to give an overview of those for you.
Good evening, members of the city council. It's nice to be here tonight. These are one of the good nights that I get to come to city council with allocations for spending instead of just saying, no, we don't have the money for that, but I'll get through it real quick. We organize these under the headers for the citywide priorities that have been given to set by city council and set for staff. Trusted government and welcoming community don't have anything underneath them for this allocation, however, the welcoming community does have one allocation recommended within Parks and Recreation Department to replace the Westside Event Center marquee sign for $30,305. It's a one-time cost. Then getting into safe community, this is where the bulk of the allocations that are being recommended are for, are held tonight. Within the fire department, we have a bunker gear replacements, we have replacing a fire engine, we have replacing fire department radios, which is the first part of a program that will have to continue into next year as well, and then we have replacing software for the fire department as well that is going to be out of date and not available to us next year. Within the police department, we have two additional dispatch workstations, getting those ready to go, as well as reclassing a police officer position to a sergeant position. That's why you see the civil service plan attached. Anytime we change police staffing a little bit, we have to update the civil service plan, so that's in the back of this AIR, this packet tonight. We also have a requirement for keep Pearland beautiful. Nice. We, sorry, and other requirements here, we have a keep Pearland beautiful, household hazardous waste allocation for 120,000. This came from, through city council recently, so this is putting the money in place behind those changes that have been made. Under strong economy within the community development department, we have a consulting building inspector contract to bring in some additional help getting inspections done for sustainable infrastructure within Parks and Recreation. We have some contractual services. This is a new contract, I believe, where we would be taking this money and using it to supplant staff's efforts to take care of a great many things in our parks, and we have more information on that, of course, if you have questions. And then within engineering and public works, we have a number of items that have come from the report after the cold snap we had around our generators, so you see coming out of the report, this is some of the recommendations that were made. The priority one generator repairs, adding closed heaters to all of our generators, connect facility generators to our building automation system, as well as purchasing additional fueling capacity with a 1,000 gallon tank. And then this last item was added in the second memo that you received regarding this budget amendment. When we presented the CIP to city council, they expressed some interest in bond election and FY 23. In order to do that, we need to do what are called preliminary engineering report or PERs. In order to do, get those started, we need an allocation of funding from Fund Balance so that we can get started on that work, so that by the time we want to go forward with the bond election FY 23, all the work is ready to go, and the public knows what they're voting on and what the costs are expected to be, and all the data and facts and information are there. So this allocation, here you can see in this fourth column here, has, brings our policy minimum to 26.3 million. It goes up because our expenditures are going up. We still remain about 2.2 million dollars over policy. We're making these calculations because it's a little bit early in the year still, to take it all the way down to, you know, right on the nose of being on policy of 25%. We left a little bit of money in there in case something were to come up this summer from a storm, let's say, or if there's expenses that, you know, come on at the end of the season that we weren't expecting. Of course, if this money isn't spent and we have it available at the end of the year or in June or July, we can always allocate it then as well per city council's wishes. That's all I have. Thank you, Mike.
If I could, as you saw with those items, you know, it's primarily public safety and following up on plans, I mean, I think about the, the generator study that we commissioned, we saw how important that is, and these are the priority one items that came out of that to improve the resiliency of those systems, and then the other pieces that come to mind would be the large ticket items for the, in the fire department, replacement engine. Again, we have a major problem with lead time, and so placing that order is important. And then we also need to get after the bunker gears and get into procurement, a cycle for those. Radios, you heard and have read in the materials, we flagged this, that those are at end-of-life, serviceable with changes to the manufacturer. So there's just a lot of meat and potato things in here that ask your consideration if we can get budget amendment one, first, I'm sorry, the first reading in tonight and move forward on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll move it to council for questions, comments, concerns.
Just one question on the, on the generators, does that include winterizing as part of the resiliency?
Councilman Perez, yes. Taking a look at doing some upgrades to battery heaters, you know, blankets, also have enclosure heaters that are not there, communication back to our BAS or building automation system or back through SCADA, and get those things fired up so that we can be more alert and aware of what's going on. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, sir. Can I pull up page five of that memo? This is just coming off of the, the items that were in the packet. The items in green were the items that were actually sourced in there, and I wanted to draw attention to on page five, some of those PERs. These were just some of the items around what we're doing, preliminary engineering to get a cost around $650,000 worth, 400 under the facility items that I remember Clay Pearson, our city manager, discussed, and it's probably back in our March meetings, about moving up in the CIP from FY 25, 26, closer to FY 23, 24. If you guys don't recall or have heard, we, we just had our, our first round of the police academy trainees get promoted, and, and I think what would help us supplement our training as well as bringing in more folks is being able to have that firearms range and driving facility close by, and I think this PR helps us move the ball on that and getting our arms around those costs. So I just want to point that out, that we, we're taking that seriously, and then as you move through the rest of this, we have some items around the, the park areas, as we heard earlier from Mr. Jackson, and being able to move the ball and bringing some of those things forward, as well as some of our items on mobility. So I just want to thank the staff for including this as part of their PR process. So thank you, guys.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? I had one quick comment, Clay, and it was, you and I had talked about this in the office, and that is the Westside Event Center marquee sign. I'd like to, I'd like to see us move forward with that. I think the sign is, it's the original, and, and it's weathered pretty, pretty rough. It needs to be replaced, but also, just like we did with the West Side Library, it's now the West Pearland Library. We've taken the word side out of that. This really isn't an event center, it's more of a community center. Be nice to rename this somehow and take the word side out, West Pearland Community Center or something of that nature. If we're going to change the sign, might as well, if we're, if we're updating the sign, this would be the opportunity to update the name.
Excellent suggestions. It's been weird for me from, since I started, why that was the West Side Event Center.
Well, the, the mud district that paid for it, named it at the time, I'd like, we'd probably need to look through some of those documents to make sure that we haven't overstepped anything, but I believe it is the city's building now, and just fundamentally for the, for the public that are here and anybody that's watching online, the word side to me just has a negative connotation to it. It denotes me versus you, the side of the fence or that side of the fence, and really and truly, we've been fighting through just unity within our community. We're east, east versus west, new versus old, all of those kind of things, and anytime we have the word side, it just brings up that, the potential for that. Not to say that it always does, but it brings up that potential. So even so much so, I refer to our community as west end versus east end, west and east ends, because we're all connected in the middle. It'd be nice to be able to take the word side off of that building as a name, and it's just a, and really call it what it is. It's a community center, an event center, something much bigger, grander than, than what we have there, so I just kind of wanted to throw that on the table. It's not part of the budget amendment, but if we're going to move forward and re, and change the sign, that would be the opportunity to update the name.
Is there an east end event center? I'm not aware. Why don't we just call it the Pearland Event Center?
And that's fine with me, too.
I was going to say that. My, I, I greatly appreciate what you're saying. I would, like, with Member Little, I would take it a step further, and let's try and eliminate the east and west from our vernacular almost entirely.
And I'm 100% behind that.
So I, I would, I'll take your lead on it, but I would be perfectly happy with it being the Pearland Event Center.
And I, and I don't know, I'll, I'll throw this to Clay. Is there, this is a budget amendment, not about the money on the naming, but I don't know that we need a council action on naming, but I think you're getting the sense.
If you don't mind, we'll probably tee up something just to formalize that in the future, and, and if you're open to it, maybe we can think, brainstorm a little bit, call it 288 or something that, I don't know, maybe make a little bit specific.
Directional signs are okay, but it, or directional naming, that was the thing about the library, that the library board just wanted to make sure that there was some kind of a directional in it, so West Pearland just became the name, but I do appreciate those comments, and I, and I'm all in favor of just calling it the Pearland Community Center.
I think you're the mayor, and you can, you can lead that how you want, but that would be, and I, I don't have a whole lot of time to have any say on it whatsoever, so, but I, I think that would be a great initiative for us to start moving in that direction.
All right. Good deal.
To no direction. There are directions or no direction.
Got it. Any other questions, comments?
Nope. Completely agree.
Got it. Okay. Anything else? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero for first reading of ordinance number 1605-5.
Okay. Thank you for that. Clay, just in the future, something maybe back to us on how we formally adopt a name change on that, that'd be great. Moving to new business item number eight, Mr. Little, would you present that, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration impossible action, first reading of ordinance number 1605-5. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Can we just do that? Sorry. Item number nine.
Consideration impossible action, first reading of ordinance number 1613, so moved.
Second. Motion and second staff report.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this is a, I'm sorry, this is an item that was presented to the council a couple of weeks ago for the first reading on these ordinances. It's actually this ordinance and then the, the next item on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and sort of address both through, through this. But if you recall, back in 2015, when the city annexed the the city annexed the Bailey Road corridor, there were two sections of property that were annexed at the time. And as required by law, we approached property owners that were ag-exempt properties and had to give them the opportunity to enter into a development agreement that would allow them to defer annexation. We did that with the property owners and there were a total of four at the time. And that allowed them to defer annexation for a period of five years. That five years expired obviously in 2020, but we were in the midst of COVID at the time and that created challenges. And so we ended up deferring it an additional two years and, and now bringing it to the council for, to go ahead and move forward with the annexation of these two properties. At the last meeting, the council had a couple of questions that you wanted to have answered, I think primarily based upon the, one individual resident who spoke and was opposed to moving forward with the annexation. And one of those questions the council wanted to answer was how long could the city defer? And the maximum number of years that can be deferred under the local government code would be a total of 45 years. To date, we've deferred this for seven years. The other thing that the council asked was regarding the tax implications, because these individuals obviously were able to defer their taxes over the last seven years while the remainder of the properties that were annexed have been paying taxes. And I think it was, the questions there focused a bit on the, the equities associated with that, with those being deferred over a period of time. The notices have all gone out to the property owners to, for these two properties to move forward with the annexation. I know that one individual, Mr. Hill, I don't know, Mr. Hill is here this evening. And Joel and I have both had conversations with Mr. Hill and I don't know if he signed up to speak this evening or not.
He didn't.
That's okay. And, and I think the mayor, yeah, I'll defer to council and mayor on that issue. But anyways, just wanted to let you know that there is an individual here and I believe the resident, Ms. Woods, who was here last week is not here this evening. Be happy to answer any questions and as we get into the discussion.
Okay. Just from council's perspective, do you, anybody have any problem if Mr. Hill speaks? All right. Mr. Hill, we'll give you three minutes. Name and address at the podium. We'd appreciate it. When you're done, city secretary has a, a form if you would mind filling that out. Thank you for being here.
Um, when I had discussed the annexation a couple of weeks ago, three, four weeks ago, somewhere along the line, I thought it was a done, it was pretty much a done deal. And as Mr. Coker just mentioned, that the procedure can be delayed some additional time. And that's really why I'm here tonight. I would, I'd like to, to maybe throw myself on the mercy of the council in, in view of the, the wonderful proceedings that have happened here tonight. Maybe you guys are in a good mood and would see fit to, to extend or delay the annexation on both of those properties. And that's, that's really why I'm here. I didn't realize that it could be done. I thought it was a done deal, but since, since it's not, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Well, that's, that's very fair. Like I said, if you'd get a form from the city secretary, she's right here. Oh, we've got it. Darrell, thank you. Fill that out so we can have your name and address tied back to the comments. That'd be great. Thank you for being here. So questions, comments from council on that?
My comment, Mayor, and thematically would be as, as we discussed in the last meeting. I don't, I appreciate that, that this extension was given. You know, I was a firm advocate for annexation during Bailey Road's annexation and during the last round of annexation that the state allowed. Given that we passed that point and the state now believes that we shouldn't have the right to do an involuntary annexation, while I disagree with that fundamentally, I don't see any value in annexing this property. It doesn't bring much to us. It doesn't mean much to the property owner. I would say that if we could create it, a creative extension of allowing the annexation to, to be postponed for as long as legally possible or be triggered upon the request to develop the property so that we can, if it's developed, then we have to annex it and then we can zone change it and control the development, which is our only interest in the property, if that's legally possible. If we could enter it, modify the development agreement so that it, it reads as such.
Again, the council can defer annexation for an extended period of time, not to exceed 45 years, with the same conditions that if it develops during that time outside of the ag use, then the annexation could occur.
That would be my preference. The only reason that we would annex it is to control the development. If we can prevent it from developing until we annex and trigger the annexation upon the request to develop it, then we, we meet the same goal without taking a relatively insignificant amount of money to our coffers, but probably a significant amount of money to individual landowners' coffers. I am term limited.
No, no comment.
And it's irrelevant either way.
Interesting perspective and, and comments on that. Questions, comments? Where's Camp Car?
I, I just want to get some clarity on this. Can you, just a reminder, it's been two weeks. What is the structure that was in place at the time and where are we now with regards to agreements? Because I guess the part that I'm, I don't have clarity on is if this was an agreement or not agreement, like where are we now? And like, what can we do? Because I, I had no idea that we could force solve, but at the same time, other people in this process did not force solve previously or in years back. And so I'm just trying to get clarity on what was allowed or not allowed.
Good question. And so when we proceeded with the annexation, state law said, okay, here's the area you're going to annex.
Put a timing on that, when that was?
Okay. This was in 2015. Okay. And actually, the city originally attempted to annex the properties around 2010 and then ended up delaying the annexations then, did not move forward with the annexations, and then proceeded to go ahead and move forward with the annexations in 2015. When that annexation occurred, state law says anybody that's ag exempt within the area you're looking to annex, you have to approach them and offer them an opportunity, opportunity to enter into a development agreement whereby they can defer annexation for a term that we would agree upon. We had to make the offer. If you can't agree on a term or an agreement, then the city can go ahead and proceed with the annexations of those properties. So we approached the property owners with the, the recommendation of a five-year term. In this case, Mr. Hill and, and the city and, and then also Ms. Woods and the city and her husband at, at the time, entered into those agreements, the agreements in your package or in the tonight's packet, in which they agreed that at the conclusion of the five-year period, which was in 2020, we could proceed with the annexation. And in fact, it goes a bit further. The actual agreement states that the agreement is a petition for annexation at the end of the term of the agreement. And so we're at the conclusion of that term plus two years, and now it's time to go ahead and proceed with the annexation of the property as was agreed upon at that time. And I don't know if that provides enough information to answer your question. If you have additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So just to clarify, some people in 2015 said, all right, game's up. Just annexing and do what you're going to do. I drive on city roads. I, I get city ESD services via contract. And then some people pushed.
No, the, the other properties, I mean, you're, because you're, there were very few ag exempt properties that were eligible for this option. The, all the other properties, it was a unilateral annexation by the city. Okay. It was not a voluntary annexation. And so all the other properties really did not have the opportunity to defer. Only these property owners that were ag exempt.
So Darren, if I'm reading the write-up correctly, this specific piece of property at 5806 Bailey is on the south side of Bailey Road. So there was roughly 230 acres south of Bailey Road from Mamble to Veterans. I forget how many acres Mr. Hill has. It looks to be, what, four, five? You have eight, eight acres. Okay. So the other 222 acres were annexed seven years ago, unless one of those other, I know there was four.
Right.
Where the Dollar General is, which is on the north side, it's in the other 213 acres. The lady that was here last time, I think that's the next one up, Charles Avenue, that one was there. She's got the same thing, six, seven, eight acres, something like that. And then there's one more that we're supposed to see in a couple of weeks.
Well, well, we're, we're still trying to, to go through some paperwork because there's some issues. As you know, these, the term for this is five years and we're looking for the, the, the official completely executed document. We have one executed by the other individuals. We're still looking for the signature pages for the city. At the time, we were also, there was a transition from one facility to another and back, and we're trying to locate that. If we can find that. If not, then we'll re, reapproach that issue with the council.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. My, my only issue is, is just the fairness of the other 220 acres. In this case, well, with, with both of them together, 400 and, you know, 45 acres. So roughly you minus out some of the acres that, that had this allowed. So some 430 acres, you know, took on annexation seven years ago and have been paying accordingly since then. So to me, it's the equity of it in that situation. I, I get it. I defer it as long as I possibly could. Right. Yeah. 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 Well, we can't, I'm sorry, we can't really dialogue at this point, but, but I, but I appreciate it. And, and, and so I, I mean, I, I would want to defer it personally as long as I possibly could as well. They have received two additional years in addition to the agreement that they signed. So, and that was done because of COVID, if I understand, Mr. Coker, is that correct?
Yep.
Now, that was staff just.
That's correct.
Did that because of the COVID time period we were in. So I, I just look at it for the other owners of the, of, of the annexation that, and, and you're right, council member, it's not a lot of money one way or the other in, in, in our coffers, but I just look at it as the fairness of people up and down the roadway.
Just a question here. In the write-up, there's an amount that was estimated in the taxes that were saved or deferred. Do we have line of sight on that calculation? I mean, because I think the amount is substantial in relative terms, 3,600 or almost $4,000, somewhere around there, 3,500.
Let me see. I'm trying to figure out this.
The, the total tax bill is at 36 or 40. The change is estimated $400 for the year.
So it's real money. I mean, it's, it's not 10 bucks. The, the part that I'm struggling with and I would defer to the council a little bit is the folks who've already been annexed in for five years have paid, but they've used the city road or they've got ESD services. I hope nobody's house burned down that time, but the city was going to devote resources to stepping up. And I just hear a lot about fairness on other issues around the city and it, it's really difficult. At the end of the day, that's $400 somebody's got to pay, you know, and that, that's not easy. Like I, I don't have $400 in my back pocket right now to go do that. I have to go pull a check out and, you know, all that. But I think it's, it's, how do you deal with this? And to your point, Mayor, there's a couple of more of these coming down the pike. Like it's not just one person, it's two or three and, and for everybody thereafter that might be in this bucket, how do you manage that process? You know, I, I don't think it's a one-person scenario.
Right. Any other questions, comments?
I was here for the original annexation. I, I think to Mr. Hill, it'd be great if we can defer it, but I think this is one where the airplane was flying, flying banners, calling us, telling us how evil we were. I don't disagree with him, I guess, but we did it then and it seems like this is the right thing to do, the fair thing to do. Because neighbors all around there have been paying for the past five years. These few that'll come before us got a break. I agree with your points, Councilman Perez, but I think everybody else in that area would, would, I don't know, just doesn't feel right.
I, I get it. I, I don't, don't intend to be argumentative and I apologize if it comes off that way. This precedes the, the annexations that we implemented in order to be able to, to get out ahead of the state law change. This, this was the, the initial go at Bailey Road was about, I think, 2009. And there was a, a strong push in that community to not allow the annexation. And then we had a second go of it. So this was still when we had raw involuntary annexation. And that's the only differentiation I would make. I, I mean, if I'm on an island, I wouldn't argue it. I just, I think we're all just discussing like, is it fair, more fair to the neighbor or is it more fair to treat these in the condition that the current law would require? I, I wouldn't say that there's a right or wrong answer, depending on your perspective. I'm sure he would think that there's a right and wrong answer. But I think if that's, that's the way the council wants to move, I certainly honor that decision. I, I will vote against annexing it for the reasons that I stated before.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, moving in that direction. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
All right. Moving to item number 10. Mr. Perez, would you place that on the table, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration possible action. Sorry. First reading of ordinance 1614. So moved.
We have a motion of second. Staff report.
Same topic, different property.
Yep. This one's on the north side and west of 1128, I believe.
Mayor, I'll just state that I'm, I'll vote no for the same reasons as before.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
All right. Back to Mr. Orlando. Actually, 11 and 12 are both not necessarily related, but we have to read both into the record. So we'll do both of it at the same time. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. If you are okay, I can read those into the record and then have the council so move on a motion.
Okay.
And just to clarify for, for the public here, again, these are two resolutions that are required in order for the city to proceed through the process of acquiring right-of-way by eminent domain. And they have to be read completely into the record. And so I'll go ahead and do that at this time. The first would be consideration possible action resolution number R 2022-91, a resolution of the city council, the city of Pearland authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee title to certain property being a 10-acre tract of land out of 15.301 acre tract of land out of the SC Haney survey, abstract 362, Harris County, Texas, and the official records of Harris County, Texas for the construction and maintenance of public drainage improvements on certain real property described herein. And then consideration possible action resolution number R 2020, 2022-92, resolution of the city council, city of Pearland authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee title to certain property being a 0.0270 acre, 1,174 square feet parcel of land located when the out, within the Alexander Crane Harris and Brooks survey, abstract 402, Brazoria County, Texas, and being a portion of lot 19 of Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, section 24, recorded in volume two, page 89 of the Brazoria County plat records, being at, being out of and a part of a call 347 acres and a portion of lot 19 accorded in, recorded in the name of Masters Road LLC and Brazoria County clerk's file number 2021 068821 in the official records of Brazoria County, Texas for the construction, maintenance of public road improvements on certain real property described herein.
So moved.
We have a motion of seconds. Any staff report?
Just to clarify that the, the first property, the 10-acre property, this is being acquired for regional detention associated with the phase two of the Lower Kirby Drainage Improvements in the master plan. And then the second item is a, again, it's only 1,174 square feet that's located at the corner of County Road 101 and 1128, and it's for road improvements that are required as part of the Massey Development Agreement that we discussed earlier this evening.
All right. Yeah. So one's Lower Kirby, the other one's Massey. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on both, 11 and 12.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero for resolution number R 2022-91 and R 2022-92.
All right. Now we're going to go backwards in the agenda. Item F, as in Frank, under
Item F, as in Frank, under items removed from consent agenda. Mr. Carbone, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R2022-89, so moved.
Agreed.
Motion, a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As part of the fitting out of our forthcoming surface water treatment plant, we're in need of technology. Put the memo on the page, Joshua. As it says in the memo, we need interfaces, screens, et cetera. Acquire those, recommending through Datavox, who's an established vendor with us. This provides the various interfaces and touchscreens. And as the memo stated, that's in your packet, this is all within the existing project for furniture fixtures and equipment, so recommending the 172,000 at Datavox this evening. Nothing to add.
All right, thank you. I'll defer to Councilmember Kamkar.
Just very briefly, I just want to get two questions from Skipper, that this is right now in budget. The second item is, where is the timing? I know that parts, electronics are hard and not necessarily always produced here, but if we go forward with this, do we have a thought process on the timing of when that'll be installed?
So the answer to the first question is, yes, it is still in the budget. We had set aside $1 million or $1.5 million, I believe, for FFNE. We spent about a million of it on the data center and associated components. So this is about half of what we have left in the FFNE budget. Now I've forgotten your second question.
Because it's electronics and timing and things of that nature, do we think that we're going to have this within a reasonable amount of time installed and going?
We spoke specifically of this issue when we talked to Datavox about this, and the intent is that, we're all aware that there are problems obtaining some of this equipment. We know that going into this thing. Datavox has been kind enough to set aside some things that would allow us to utilize the system at somewhat reduced capacity, but we would be able to utilize it during plant commissioning and startup.
Just for the record, we came in, what, two and a half, or is it $3 million under budget on the last big project, which was the library? So I feel like we'll be okay on the FFNE on this. So I just wanted to highlight, anything with the surface water plant is sensitive right now, especially with what it is, but it's in our budget, it's moving forward, and we're on the right path, at least for now.
I think so, yes.
Great, thank you, Skipper.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, moving to other business, there is none. Mayor, council issues for city council discussion? There is one, item number 13. Where'd I leave off? Yeah, and that'll be the next one.
It's a discussion item, Mayor.
Yeah. The discussion item was consideration possible action, so, Member Perez, would you present it?
Sure. We don't really have a motion on here, so consideration possible action regarding potential amendment to the ethical ordinance, so moved.
We have a motion, a second, and I'll defer to Member Perez, since I think you were the initial, and Member Kamkar was your second.
Thank you, Mayor. So kind of bookending my term on council, I think one of the first things that I did as a council member was support the reinforcement of our ethical ordinance. I think a fitting that one of the last things that I initiate is the same. Certainly, this is not in response to any particular thing that a council member has proposed or done, but as I've kind of ended my term, and some realizations have come as to kind of the power and the authority that we as council members may have, even into our waning days, you know, we don't ever want anybody in our community to believe that we're not acting even to our last vote in the best interest of the citizens of Pearland. We've done, the previous councils that I have worked on prior, or worked with prior to me, have done a lot of work to continue to reinforce this ethical ordinance, to ensure that there is clear transparency and clear understanding that structurally we can't operate other than in their best interest. So my thought here was this, Mayor. Certainly, this would mostly be punitive towards me directly at this time, but I think generally, it's a good policy for us to have. So what I'm asking is that we strengthen the ethical ordinance so that members of council, after they've left their term, cannot contract either directly or through a business that they have an ownership share of, either directly with the city or through a subcontractor for a period of six months. The idea here would be that even as I make motions and seconds or postponements to this, my second-to-last meeting or my last meeting, I could not make any motion that would directly benefit me, for instance, or any council member could. For instance, if we had a council member that owned a cleaning service, and in the waning days, they requested that the contract for the renewal get postponed so that they have an opportunity to bid on it. There's little to nothing that we do that doesn't happen within six months. For me personally, this would, not that I would do it, but I would say this would prevent me or somebody in my position to say, hey, this drainage contract that's coming up, let's not award that until June or July, which would give me an opportunity to propose on that. Certainly, that's not something that I would do, but I think it's good for us to have that structural control. This kind of dovetails with our two-year period where we cannot lobby for money, so this would kind of be thematically in that same understanding that we have in the ethical ordinance. So that's what I'm requesting of councils, that we just add that to our current ethical ordinance.
Okay. Any follow-up to that?
Mayor, I've got a couple of comments. I was the second on this. First of all, I want to thank Member Perez. He called me about this and said, would I be willing to work on something around ethics on this? And I said, yes. You know, at the end of the day, we serve the public interests and not ourselves, and I think Member Perez is working really hard to further that commitment to the public interests. Most of the members up here have some affiliation with the business world, one way or the other. Maybe they own a business, maybe they work for a business. But, you know, going out and saying, I'm going to sit on the sidelines, I think is a good thing. A little bit of a timeout period isn't a bad thing. I'd like to offer just two friendly amendments around this, and one would be the way that this is written, and can we bring the provision up on the screen, is that no council member may contract with the City of Pearland. I'd like to maybe shift it that the City of Pearland cannot put more of the onus on the city to be aware of who it's contracting with, as opposed to the council member that's rolling off. I just think that there needs to be an awareness, and a question has to be asked, and I would much rather put that on the robust, you know, legal team in having to go ferret that out in that process. And then I would probably ask that if it's okay with the team, maybe go from six months to nine months. I would go for a year, but I don't want to push my luck. I told that to the member when we were discussing it, and so I'm going to push him a little bit, but those would be my two amendments, just put more of the onus on the city to, hey, are you affiliated with the council person? Are you there? And then extending that duration out from six to nine. So those would be my two friendly amendments. I'll put that out to the council to weigh, but those are where I would like to go with that.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second on the amendments. I do have a question real quick. I know Darren's trying to get some clarification.
Just to clarify, if those are true amendments that are going to be seconded, I'd prefer that it, that nine or, I guess, not nine or 12, I mean, I'd like to have one or the other if we're going to-
I think he proposed nine.
Oh, is it? Okay, just wanted to clarify.
The question I've got is back on the underlying, when you were speaking about it, Member Perez, in your write-up, it says personally or via business for which they own a controlling interest for six months, but then in your talking points, you said or has any ownership. And I want to make sure, because somebody might have an ownership, the mutual fund on some big, large corporation that does contracting with the city, and that certainly isn't what you're talking about. So I want to make sure that we really clarify the controlling interest.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll respond to that and the request on the amendment. So that is the intent, the controlling interest. So if you are 51% owner of a company, then obviously you have a benefit. But if I own, you know, 5% of a stock for a company that's performing a service, obviously that shouldn't eliminate that company from providing that service. So I personally, I think the six months is fine, that's why I requested it. I think onus on the council member or on the city, either one is fine with me, that however the language is written, I think within six months, I know a council member should pretty much remember, I was on council six months ago. I'm not proposing on this, but I think it should be, with all of our ordinance, the burden is shared by both parties.
I had something too, that would also be a potential amendment, but I appreciated your line of questioning, Mayor Cole. My thought here would be to lessen the threshold from a controlling interest of 50% to something more like a significant interest of 10%, let's say. I mean, if we want this to have any kind of enforceability, I know a lot of people, you own a company with your wife, and your wife has 51%, and you have 49% for instance. So I think to, for this to be, to just further the spirit of the ordinance, I would propose reducing it probably to a 10% interest, but appreciate the proposal and will support it.
Let me, Tony, to you.
I guess what I would, I'm fine with six, nine, 12 months. I know there's a lot of talk up here. I guess I would ask to move this forward if Darren has enough clarification to take some notes and bring it back, where we have some real language to look at. I do agree, you know, 10%, some threshold, less than controlling, but more than inconsequential amount makes sense. If we get to nine months, I'm fine with that, but I think it'd be easier if we're planning on voting on this tonight, or since we're talking through tonight without real language, let's let Darren work on it and craft it, because I can think of other parts of the ethical ordinance that talk to your wife owning ownership and all that. So we don't have to recreate the will, I think it's already there, but if you can take the spirit of what we're attempting to accomplish, I think that'll work.
And that's what I was going to suggest, because this is an ethical ordinance, and so it probably, it needs to be done with the right spirit behind it, and as far as the language is concerned. Darren, do you think you've got some direction with this?
I really do. I think, and I can work on some language and bring back as a draft amendment for council to consider, and of course, y'all will always have the ability to amend that as well, but at that time. But I think tonight, it's up to the council. If you actually want to have a formal vote on it tonight, you can do that, but on the other hand, if you feel like, hey, okay, we've given Darren direction, I've echoed that, yes, I've received enough direction to work on this. I agree. Councilmember Carbone, there's some terms within the ordinance already that sort of define interest that can help, I think, as far as addressing that issue and trying to maintain consistency with interest, I guess, so to speak. So anyway, I can put together some language, bring that back to council.
If Member Carbone's willing to go to a year, I'll go to a year. I'm there. I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it. And then to the point, I don't know where the language needs to go, but I would like to have the city be on the verified piece on this. The city may not, as opposed to a council member may not, or a former. I would like, the city has to do a certain level of due diligence on this, but I appreciate Member Perez's being willing to lead on this item. I think ethics is important, and I feel like, it sounds like the council wants to move in a direction towards that. And with controlling interest, anything above 10% works for me. I agree that the minimis on a large portfolio of stocks is not reasonable.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we understand to find that. Is there any objection to moving this to June 9th with some clear language?
May 9th.
I mean, May 9th, with some clear language, you know, provided, and then obviously, we could, you know, we can always amend that that night, but I think that would be real good. I think everything that's been mentioned tonight strengthens the ordinance, does everything that Member Perez talked about in transparency, as well as just holding us accountable, you know, doing the best interest of the citizens out here. So Darren, would we need a formal postponement?
Actually, no, because there's no, you don't have any proposed language in, well, you have the-
A motion, a second.
The motion, a second, but if the council's okay with postponing that, and when it comes back, it'll probably come back with an actual resolution number next time. So if you want to go ahead and just postpone it to the next agenda, that's fine.
We don't need action to postpone it.
Well, no, I mean, if the council would go ahead and motion postpone, it'd be good.
I move to postpone.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Little. Motion carries five to zero to postpone to May 9th.
All right, moving to item number 14, I'll place it just kind of out there, it's a council input discussion regarding potential rewrite of the city's Unified Development Code with an emphasis on user-friendliness through the simplification and efficiency of the development process, elimination of ambiguities or conflicts, and the consolidation of fragmented development guidelines to achieve continuity and consistency in the development process. What, number one, I guess, we had a goal through our, even our goal-setting retreat that we did, to talk about updating or rewriting or amending and all those kind of things, the UDC. Member Perez and I have been meeting with John and Clay a couple of times to talk about what, where, and how would this move forward. And so, out of professional courtesy even to Member Perez, with one more meeting left, we wanted to have a discussion just to get some thoughts and comments from council as he moves on in direction to staff. With budget considerations coming up, obviously, there's some budgetary, you know, implications behind it as well. So if it's something that we're serious about moving forward, we need to kind of give direction to staff to kind of be moving in that direction. Member Perez, I'll defer to you for any other comments.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I want to tell you, I greatly appreciate you taking the time with me to discuss this. I think we've been talking on this item since before you were mayor about the necessity to revisit this. I really want to take the time to thank John and his staff for meeting with the mayor and I to discuss this at length. Those were healthy, long meetings where we discussed a number of iterations of how this, of the scope and parameters of this, Clay as well. You know, since I got on, I've wanted to revisit the Unified Development Code, not necessarily to remove the provisions as much as to try and ensure that the language is more user-friendly, to make sure that, again, more punitive towards me than anybody else, but I don't want people having to hire me to just decipher what this means. The theme that I've had since I've been on councils, we want the no's to be as cheap as possible. We took a first stab at it, and council at the time thought we weren't quite ready to get that far deep into it, but we did, we did move forward with changes to the conditional use permit. I take a great deal of pride in what we were able to accomplish that, because, remember Carbone and Mayor, y'all recall, the conditional use permit previously was extraordinarily arduous, took a lot, and there was a lot of meddling in how that was created that made the process really just way too difficult for the applicant. So I'd like to kind of restart with the Unified Development Code. So I'd I'd like to kind of restart with the Unified Development Code. This comes cooperatively with staff. Staff thinks that the the language is too dense and too difficult for them to interpret. So this would benefit them as well as our citizenry, as well as our council. So our request is with this initiative, the best, this should not be something that's done in a rush. This will take years, at least, at least a year, maybe two. We should not do this in a knee-jerk reaction, and we should reduce our desire to respond to the most immediate concern and modify the criteria to address the latest issue that was been brought to our attention. But the best way to do this, I'm a firm believer in the work of committees, and I think the best way to do this is to allow the mayor the authority to appoint a committee to present to council with a cross-section that I'm confident the mayor can feel comfortable with, that would include staff and in zoning, EDC, any members that the mayor feels comfortable with. But I think we, you know, we give the mayor the authority to create a committee for us to begin the work of rewriting and revitalizing not just our Unified Development Code, but all of the criteria that affect development to include in amendments we have to the International Building Code, to include any provisions that we have in the Engineer Design Criteria Manual, the International Fire Code, particularly Appendix C and D, which directly affects site development, all of the other provisions. But better create to better create documents that are user friendly, easier for the layman to sophisticated layman to navigate and give us the opportunity to let our citizens be able to read the documents and know preemptively that their proposed development would not be able to move forward because the language is very clear, saves them time, money, and headache.
I'd like to also just staff thoughts on that because I know John for sure has some comments on the current UDC and this opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think the the main thing is we're looking to create a document that is easier for us to sit down with applicants, whether it be a citizen coming in to deal with with just an add-on or something with their property or a business owner or a design professional. We keep amending the code. It's kind of what we do every few months. We're back before you with amendments to the UDC. UDC keeps getting bigger, keeps getting more bloated. And I think to take an opportunity to step back, work our way through it, there's a lot of good regulations in there, they're just not written well, they're not presented well. I think some of that, a lot of the message, the original intent, has gotten lost over the years. And to be able to sit down with staff and with the committee and bring forward to council something that would be more understandable and then more usable, creating a document that would be web-based, that would allow you to go back and forth as we have references to other sections, and you don't get lost in the document. So I think this is a good opportunity based on the history of the code, the UDC, what we have. Now, obviously, there are, the code is just one part of the development process, as as Member Perez said, with Engineering Design Criteria Manual, the codes as a whole, it's a good chance to make sure everything mixes well together, that everything is designed to incorporate the documents so we do have a better overall approach to development in the city.
Questions, comments from Member Orlando?
Yeah, I think this is good. This is something we've been talking about for a while in terms of doing a rewrite, I guess. Just having gone through this document many times and seeing the length and complexity and also seeing this, the estimated project costs, I mean, would want your feedback, John, but this would seem like something to some extent that you would like bring in some kind of outside resource or consultant with expertise in the space to conduct review. Of course, we put together an ad hoc committee that, you know, I don't think we were really able to get it all the way there just because there's so much to go through and, you know, so I guess kind of wanted your your thoughts on that. It would seem in reading this that the thought was that some kind of there'd be a consultant involvement here.
Yes, sir. The proposal would be to bring in a professional, somebody experienced in development and development law to help help us work through the process, right? And so we would basically just go through the different sections with the committee, present what we have, what possible alternatives there might be, get feedback from the committee, and then hopefully sort of bring it down to a final document.
Yep, I think that's great. You know, if we need a committee there, I think I'll have some disagreements on how that committee is comprised, but I think fundamentally, this is a great, this is a much needed thing and very much in alignment with our strategies that we've laid out.
We did the portal, like update process, like the one-stop shop, and I think that this moves in that direction.
Yep.
The concerns that I have are, as John brought up, these are technical in nature. These are not. They get to like, what is like the structure? How is it placed on a site? How is the site prepared? What is the expectations on that? When I see the EDCM, which is the Engineering Design Criteria Manual, that is not, that is just not for the layman to easily access. I mean, it's highly technical. When Raj went in the discussion on the development criteria, we had a solid stream of consciousness for five minutes on a very technical item, you know, and why it had to be done a certain way. And so I'm I am supportive of the efforts, but I really would like there to be this to be a consultant-driven exercise. The second thing is, is the state legislature in recent sessions, you know, they're putting laws in place on how you regulate materials, how you regulate the process on timing of an application, on things that are relatively esoteric, but they're very important. There's a shot clock on this where we can't leave you on a an application for 270 days. You apply and they don't get an answer, you're approved. So I just, as much as I think that we want to bring the local knowledge base, the reality is that there's there's bigger scope here. And so if we're going to go down that road, I want this to be really consultant-driven. I think that there's input at the local level that that needs to happen. But there's also the lifespan of where we are in the city. One portion of the city is relatively modern, is modern infrastructure, and one is areas that we're going to be rehabbing and working on for the next 20 years. How you go and design around those constraints are different. And so I guess as somebody who has a little bit of a background in this, there are going to be parts that are going to be very accessible that we can go and have grandma or grandpa or mom or dad or business owner access and understand because they're going to have to live with the consequences of what the rewrite is. But I think there's other parts that are very technical that I have a lot of concern with. The one thing I would say on the EDCM, I would really prefer that that be excluded from this. I think that is a discussion at the city level with the people who are managing the engineering of the city and letting them have the rein on what they believe is best for how the city needs to continue. And so I have I have a little bit of uneasiness there. That's not to say that that can't come together in this discussion, but I don't accessing the EDCM a little more clearly is not what I think the the goal should be. The goal should be putting engineering criteria that keeps people safe. You know, and so that's that's just where I am. So this is a council and input discussion. There's my guidance on that.
That's good stuff.
After serving on the CUP Committee, you get so glassy-eyed with all the initials and EDCM and UDC and all this. I think this is a huge undertaking. I think it's well past due. I'm glad, John, that you're willing to step up and I guess manage it. We will have to have the outside expertise. It's going to be a huge undertaking, but certainly needed. And I do think we need to to have the the technology where if the UDC, if you get to a point and it says, you know, this has to comply, if it needs to point to the EDCM, then point to it. I mean, I'm a big fan of if mom and pop can get in there, I want it to be accessible and they can read it. And if they can't, then at that point, they can go out and engage somebody. But I think it's, I don't want to, I don't want any small business that wants to expand in the city to have to go out and hire an engineer just to read some code for them and interpret it. And I think that that's how I read the goal of this write-up is is more plain language. And when it does get into the engineering side, then certainly lean on that. But as I know you will, but I want any business owner here to be able to expand and not have to go spend 50 or 100 grand with a consultant to decipher the code.
Member Little, do you have anything?
Yeah, I like all the comments that were mentioned here, and I do believe that it should be led through with with consultants, kind of driving it and bringing it along. They are the expertise and experience in doing this. I do think some form of citizen committee as a component of it, but I think those that are on that committee should have some expertise in understanding this. I do like having components of P and Z, EDC, obviously staff, even council kind of being a part of it. I'm open to suggestions once we get to that point, we're not there yet, from council on how we how we put that committee together. It needs to be full import input from everyone, so we do understand. I don't have a problem, as as Member Perez said, that, you know, coming up with the group, but I would certainly lean on you for, you know, people to put on it. I don't disagree that 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 Engineering Criteria Manual, those types of things are kind of a separate document, and they're a lot more expertise-driven, but having some references to it along the way. But the biggest thing for me, everything is moved digital, and I think that's going to be one of the biggest issues. In fact, John, my question is, moving it towards digital, is the $300,000 budget the right number in moving in that direction? You know, where somebody where we have a, whether it's a portal or it's part of our website or whatever, they go into it, I we need to make sure that that number's probably, you know, the right number that you have in here in the in the budget or the on the item here. But I agree, it needs to be where somebody can kind of read it and understand it. The current UDC is written by attorneys, so it's it's all legalese. And so if we can take that legalese and make it a little bit more plain English so people can understand it without compromising the legal side of things. As we discussed through it, it was kind of interesting, we were kind of just talking about setting aside, you know, committee and consultant and then doing amendments. And the more and more we were talking about it, I go, the pile of amendments is going to be so big, why don't we just work on a total rewrite? We work on what we want, you keep the current in place, and then you just do a repeal and replace when you get ready to do it. It's actually how we did it with the current UDC and the old Development Code and the subdivision regulations and all that. We just repealed, replaced, and moved on. So we would have all of our current moving in the same direction or in the direction that we're moving now. We would just work them, you know, in separate ways. The effort would definitely take a year plus to get there. It might be two, might be a year and a half. So and like I said, it is one of our goals that we talked about. It's been needed. UDC's now, by the time we replace it, it'd probably be 18 years old. So and we, I don't know, Darren, do you know how many times we've amended it? A lot. And I do know, you know, John, we've talked about in the in the comprehensive plan, there's some new terms and strategies and what we've been talking about that we're showing people on, you know, higher-dense, you know, type of developments and those types of things. And I've been, you know, it's going to be hard to see how our current UDC incorporates all of that. So if we're changing in our comprehensive plans, some of the way we're looking, especially on infill development and that thing, it might be good in the rewrite that we, you know, bring that new terminology to up in it as well. Those are my thoughts.
I would say it sounds like we made a lot of ground here. I think all of us agree, a consultant needs to be an integral part to it because the work needs to be done by somebody. And I will tell you, having once been told, hey, we need to identify and modify all the provisions of the EDCM, this was probably 2011 when I was a staff member, and I was trying to chip away at it in my free time, there was just, there wasn't enough, there wasn't enough time, and we could have doubled our staff and still wouldn't have been enough time. Consultant needs to be involved, they need to input. The citizenry needs to be involved because they need to help to inform us as a council and help inform the community what our priorities are. As we stated in the meeting, we don't have to change a single provision of the UDC when we're done necessarily, as long as the language is cleaner. I doubt that we'll go through an iteration of this and not make significant changes to the to the provisions, but the goal is not wholly to change the provisions as much as thematically make it more user-friendly. Little, as a as an engineer, I certainly appreciate what Member Cam Carr is saying. There are components of the EDCM that are not meant for the layman. If you're talking about using a Fernco coupling on a sanitary sewer connection, nobody gives a shit about that. Nobody cares, right? I care about that, it's important to me, but you know, those things don't need to be mad. If you're talking about if you get to a pond of five foot of depth, then now you have to have a 20-foot offset setback, you know, that's the stuff where you start eating up land. And if you have a one acre, half acre, two acre, three acre site, as I've commonly told people in my profession, it's harder to design one acre site than it's a 10 acre site. Because when you start getting in those in those components, it's very hard to fit all of those people in that box. We would at least like to have the opportunity for the larger ticket items that really eat up a lot of land and cost a lot of money to be understandable to the layman to say, I cannot do this.
No, I think, Member Perez, I think you're absolutely right. The issue that I'm going to have and I'm going to bring up as we move that process forward is there are parts of Pearland that are in a different box from infrastructure and point of view, and there are certain elements that it's just not going to fit. And I want to I want to give deference to the staff to be able to identify those items. There's going to be parts that we should say, these are vintage areas or areas that are in a different bucket, and they probably have a different set of criteria than than where you would be at the corner of 288 and Broadway. I mean, they're just, they're fitting in a different bucket. I just want to give the staff this much latitude. And then to off, piggyback on one item, the gentleman here at the public hearing literally couldn't tell you, didn't know he had to go to CUP for that, for being in that bucket around the Old Town site, and he seemed like a relatively experienced individual in this, but he couldn't access that. And so I think that goes to the point that you guys were making about making it a little more readable, a little more straightforward and user-friendly, being able to know, hey, these guys are in a different bucket and have a different process.
Certainly.
He didn't even know.
I would put that responsibility on his consultant. His consultant should have told him, we're not designing anything until we know whether the shoes has it. It would be better if he had the opportunity to identify that on his own.
All right. Clay and John, do you have kind of direction? Sounds like we've got an appetite to kind of move this forward. Would this be part of the budget process before that, after that? What are your timeline thoughts on bringing something forward?
I'll defer to John. It seems like, you know, we got the comp plan, and I was saying earlier that this could actually dovetail nicely if we get the the process rolling and we get the comp plan done, and then it can move into this whole effort. But I would suggest maybe a budget, next year, 23 budget would be a good one.
Yes, sir. I think we would take the summer to identify a committee, if that's what council wishes to do, and then we would look to identify a consultant. And then I think we could piggyback as we're ending the comp plan project, move into the UDC. We would have that. So I would say I use a summer to prep and then hopefully launch.
Yeah, get through the comp plan and then move into this.
Sure.
Sound good? No, no action taken, obviously. Good discussion, sounds like we can move forward in updating our UDC. So with that, we'll move to executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with City Attorney. Legal consultation regarding interpretation of city charter will adjourn at 9:05.
The session at 9:47 PM. Council will take no action and we will move to adjournment at 9:47.
Good morning, Dolores. How are you doing?
Doing great.
Great, excellent. So, we are here to spotlight you for Women's History Month, specifically for the Dolores Fenwick Native